I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, March 12, 2014. It is 7:03 PM. Could we have members present, please?
Joseph Atidy. Marie Brazuela.
Here.
Shaquille Ali. Joseph Waters.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here. Okay, and I believe we have some students from Marjorie Tobias to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think I saw that seventh try at the last minute. So, all right, thank you very much. We have some certificates to thank you for your leading us in the pledge. If I can give you... I'm not sure who I got.
That's James.
The first we have is for Eugene. He's hiding in the back. And the next one is Carl Angelo. And the last one is for Carly. And I've got Lila. And Eden. Okay. And we do thank you, that was very nicely done, and I understand some of you will be helping with our presentation in just a minute, too. Could we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? So, we had unanimous approval of the agenda. And this brings us to our special presentation on the Relay for Life from Rosie Tehada, a parent at Marjorie Tobias and the Tobias relay team leader, and some students to tell us about that.
Good evening. I would like to invite some of our committee members from Relay for Life to come up as well. Michelle, we've got a very, very strong team, all ages, all heights, but all very committed and dedicated to fighting cancer. And a lot of them are products of ours, this school district. Some of them are currently in high school, recently graduated, now freshmen in college, used to work for school districts here, and community leaders. And let's see, so, my name's Rosie Tehada, I'm a proud parent at Marjorie Tobias Elementary School. You probably remember me from Measure I campaign, I also serve on the Citizens Oversight Committee, and I was recently appointed the newest trustee to the Jefferson Union High School District Board. One of the other proud hats that I wear is Team Development Co-Chair of Relay for Life of Daly City, which is an arm of the American Cancer Society. And I'm a two-time cancer survivor. I survived childhood leukemia, and it's four years now I've survived breast cancer, and I can't say enough about all the work that these people put into fighting cancer, and they all are so dedicated. I want to bring up Clayton Koo to talk a little bit about Relay for Life, what it is, and about the event itself.
Thank you for letting us speak today. My name is Clayton Koo, I'm one of the event co-chairs for Relay for Life of Daly City. Relay for Life generally started in 1985. Dr. Gordy Klett in Tacoma, Washington, who was a doctor, realized that a lot of his patients were dealing with cancer, so as a result, he did a 24-hour walkathon, run-a-thon, where he walked straight for 24 straight hours and raised over $30,000 in Tacoma, Washington for the American Cancer Society. And as a result of that first Relay for Life, it's grown to over 5,200 around the world today. And Relay for Life of Daly City is just one of those 5,200 around the world, and we're trying to reach out to local community, try and get their support of the event.
So, I'm the other event chair, my name's Rupert Norbajwa. Some of you might remember me, I went to Westmore High School, graduated last year, and now I currently go to College of San Mateo, and also helped with the school board a lot during FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, so some of you guys might remember me. So, we're basically here today to advocate for the event and pretty much ask for your support. We know that Ms. Douglas came to our meeting, and we're very happy to see you there. And we would love the support of the entire board. We've reached out to other local community centers and community organizations, and we've gotten a lot of feedback and support from them as well. And now, today, we're coming here to see if you guys would be willing to help us in our strides. And this is one of the greatest and biggest events in Daly City. We, on average, raise about $30,000 to $40,000 a year. Over the course of this entire event, we've raised over $100,000 just from Daly City, so it shows you how amazing this city is and the potential we have. And this is the first year, pretty much, where we're really reaching out toward, like, community leaders as yourselves, and we really need your support when we're coming into this. Because we planned this, at the end of Relay last year, we started, and we kept planning until this year, so we have a full year of planning. And I've been doing this for six years now, six or seven years, and it's non-stop planning. So, we start, and we end, and we keep planning, and we would love your guys to come out to our event, or help us, community contacts, or whatever you can, and we'd love to ask all the people here today, too, for their support, coming from the Elementary School District. And Rosie, you also will talk about this event we're having at MH Tobias coming up.
Okay. So, we're having an event at Marjorie Tobias, and it's called Relay Recession, and basically, they're a bunch of field games, but kids are... It's during just an extended recess period, during previous two weeks, they'll be raising money toward Relay. And we make it fun, the theme is superheroes against cancer, so we're going... Mr. Harris is allowing the children to wear costumes. And so, we'll also pick two winners of the best costume, and we'll have a pizza party for the classroom that raises the most money. But it's just to fight cancer, who doesn't want to fight cancer? So, let's see, I would like to thank the board and the school district for starting a team, because I think it really, by partnering with us, it really sends a great message to the community at large, and how dedicated you are to wellness and to cancer prevention. And let's see, I'd like to introduce my daughter, Carly Burton. She is a co-captain of the Tobias Cares Team. And Carly?
Well, the reason I wrote this essay is because I go to EL Block, and then Mr. Johnson asked us to write a persuasive essay on, like, something, and then to persuade people. So, then, since almost like a lot of people were doing, like, carnivals, I thought about it, I was like, I need to do something different, so I wrote about Relay for Life, because hardly anybody knows about it in my school. If you like to be really awesome, Relay for Life is the place for you. It has games, you will save lives, and you can remember or honor loved ones who were suffering from cancer. The party is so massive that it even goes on overnight. So, don't be greedy, give to someone in need, and help cancer research. At Relay for Life, you can be one of many who save lives. You know how, at one point in your life, you wanted to be a superhero? You can live out that dream right now at Relay for Life. You just have to donate at least $5. Yep, it's that easy to save a life. Be a superhero at Relay for Life. The greatest time you'll ever have is at Relay for Life. It starts out with game booths in the day. The prizes are so big that you can even win a baseball bat. The party's so massive that it goes on all night. You can sleep over if you want. They have video game tournaments and movies. So, if you like having fun, come to Relay for Life. If a loved one died from cancer, you can remember them at Relay for Life. When it gets dark, they light up, they light candles, and put them each in a luminary bag. You can make a bag with pictures or memorials of loved ones. Also, you can honor a living cancer survivor. So, if you want to honor people who suffered from cancer, come to Relay for Life. This is the best thing that will ever happen to you. You can save lives, honor people diagnosed with cancer, and have fun while doing it. We can change the world together, we need your help to make a world with more birthdays. If you help them, you help yourself and help the world. Come to Relay for Life and change the world.
On that note, I think that says it all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Tehada, would you mind telling us the dates of Relay for Life this year?
It's June 21st and 22nd at the Westmore Sports Stadium.
Thank you.
And I want to add that anybody, of course, can join the Tobias team, but we also have, if anybody wants to join, the district-wide team, which is Team J E S D, and that's open to anyone. And all you have to do to join the team is make a donation, you do not have to walk all night. You can if you want.
We also have some swag for you, so we'll just leave it with Marina. Thank you.
And Dr. Douglas, if someone should want to join with the J E S D team, who may they contact?
They can contact me, and they can contact Sandy McCulick, and perhaps we could even put a link on the website.
Sure, we can look into that.
That'd be great.
I also wanted to acknowledge, Rich Bruegger is here. Rich, he is very active in our community and has been president of the Cora Group, and he's constantly reminding everybody in the community, all the homeowner associations, how important Relay for Life is. You've been doing it for several years, have you?
I've only been doing it about three years.
Oh, only three, that's good.
High school student, been doing it for a long time.
Yeah, but I just want to acknowledge that he has been working through the communities.
We do make a difference, we are saving lives, okay? So, join us and help us save lives.
Thank you. And also, thank you, Rosie, for all that you do, and I know last year I was over there with you guys, and it's amazing when you go to see everybody together. It's really good, so everybody should take a part of it and join there. And I know Broadmore Property Owners has done their share already, and they've allowed last year and this year for Relay for Life, the committee, to use our facility at no cost, so that they have a place to have a kickoff and a place to celebrate. So, everybody can do a little bit, everyone does something, so I hope we'll all be out there.
Anybody else have anything?
I wanted to say, first of all, is that, where is he at? Rupert?
Right here.
Go Bulldogs.
Oh.
CSM, go Bulldogs. Also wanted to congratulate Rosie on your new position, great job, lucky to have you. Carly, excellent job on your essay, excellent job, keep up the good work. And thanks for sharing, everybody, thanks for sharing, that's very important, cancer.
I just want to also congratulate Ms. Tehada for being on the Jefferson Union High School District Board, and also did what my colleagues said, to Carly, you did a great job, and was very persuasive, and you have a good future ahead of you.
All right, thank you all very much. Let's give one more round of applause to remind everybody about your performance. Okay, and that brings us to our second special presentation, which is our recognition of the winners of the 2014 J E S D Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Fair. And I believe we have Deena Conti here to talk about that.
Thank you, is it on? Good evening, school board, super members, superintendent Vidalis, cabinet members, teachers, parents, and students. It's my pleasure tonight and honor to share with you this evening about the 2014 District STEM Fair. The STEM Fair took place on February 1st, 2014, at Thomas Jefferson and Fernando Rivera Intermediate Schools. We had over 450 projects at the district fair, and almost 1,000 kids within the district participated. Participants from all grade levels were welcome, so we had a few TK projects all the way through 8th grade. The projects were judged this year by Stephen Fredericks, the Mesa Director at Skyline College, and his team of students. They were able to get through both MURs full of projects, so they had quite a job. So, congratulations to all of our participants, but particularly to our 5th and through 8th grade students. The winners, the first, second, third place winners qualified to go to the county fair at the Hiller Aviation Museum. It took place February 23rd to the 27th. So, here are our winners. From 5th grade, we had Angelica Balingit, Oscar Gayorga, and Jason Menningding from Thomas Edison, Teresa Yu and Tricia Booney from Woodrow Wilson, Tiana Cruz and Vijay Laredo from JFK, and Allison Cortez from Woodrow Wilson. In 6th grade, Yanelli Garcia from Woodrow Wilson got 2nd place, Isaiah Yakap from Woodrow Wilson got 3rd place. In 7th grade, Tamra Kya from Ben Franklin was in 1st place, Carissa Nguyen from Ben Franklin received 2nd place, and Joelle Leguio and Rebecca Zelaya from Ben Franklin received 3rd place. 8th grade, Casey Lueng, Janice Long, and Elena Dimitrova from Ben Franklin received 1st place, Angelica Scott from Ben Franklin received 2nd place, and Amanda Abusef and Sarah Abusef from Fernando received 3rd place. So, I'd also like to recognize Amanda and Sarah Abusef, who placed 2nd at the San Mateo County Fair. They qualify to go to the state fair, which is very exciting, and they also received a special award, San Mateo County Event Center Award, they received at the county fair. So, that just came through this week, so that was very exciting. There's a lot of people that worked hard to make the district science fair a success, so this time I'd like to thank the parents and teachers who helped the students with their projects and lead them through the scientific process, also to all the teacher coordinators at each site who made the district fair a success. I'd like to recognize Mark Takahashi from MH Tobias, Miriam Gonzalez from Susan B. Anthony, Monica Gatai from Thomas Edison. A special thank you to Yoko Izumi from Garden Village, she also helped update the rubrics and the new judging system. Melissa Talavera from George Washington, Philip Burnett and Newalla O'Sullivan from Daniel Webster, Samantha Ty from Ben Franklin, Linda Flynn McNebsby from Woodrow Wilson, Erin Redding from MP Brown, Nana Cabrera from Fernando Rivera, and David Pettenari from JFK. I'd also like to give a special thank you to Megan Jennings, who was the administrative intern who assisted me coordinate the district fair. Thank you.
Yeah, go right ahead, speak one line.
Well, once again, congratulations to all the students who participated in the science fair, and to those students who actually won prizes. Science is very important, and we live in a part of the county where you can actually get a good job in a science career, and we're always looking for new innovators, or the science industry is, anyway. So, keep up the good work.
Anybody else, go ahead and speak.
I just want to congratulate everybody for, number one, participating, for helping to make it work, and for all those that were honored. And I also want to say, I went to the event, and it was endless, I mean, there were so many projects to look at, and so many great ideas, I think they should be commended, they were wonderful.
Will we be able to see any of the projects? Sometimes you show us here, right?
Yeah, sometimes, I think a couple of years ago...
At least they talked about it.
No, we don't have them today.
Can any of the students talk about it?
Are there... How about the two sisters that have won the county fair, are you able to come and speak about your project?
So, we were inspired to do this project when we were hearing about the drought all over California, so we wanted to help our community, and we were thinking, like, how can we save the water? So, we were thinking, like, where do people waste a lot of their water? And after thinking about it for a while, we realized that people use countless amounts of water to water their lawns and their gardens and backyards. So, we were thinking, like, if people can use the water they already use for cleaning and washing, and just use that for watering their plants, they'd save a lot of water and help our community and the environment.
All right, great.
So, as a result for our project, it was a success and not a success. The worms all did not survive, and for the plants, all that exposed to the lower concentrations of detergents did survive, but not with the higher concentration.
So, you found that using the dirty dishwater might not be as good a plan as we'd hoped?
Well, people use a low concentration, so it's about 0.15% in our project. Plants, they were able to survive the 0.39%, but the worms, on the other hand, weren't as lucky, so if they...
It seems like the worms were in trouble, so...
So, if people want to use gray water, they should filter it and disinfect it so that it's safer to the plants and the underground animals, as well as people themselves, because if you store gray water improperly, then it'll cause bacteria and it'll be harmful.
Well, keep up the good work, and someday we'll hear some great things about you. You'll be doing some really high things.
Thank you.
Saving the world.
Yeah. Yeah, those are all the 5th grade winners.
So, we have some certificates for our district winners, and there's a prize that Ms. McCulick will hand you as a certificate, it's granted.
So, this will be the 5th graders. So, the first person is Angelica. Is she here? Okay. Second one is Oscar. Ah, here he is. Congratulations. Next one is Jason, or Haseen? The next one is Tricia.
She's at Hope's right now.
So, we'll get her to the school for her, okay? Thank you. The next one is Tiana. Congratulations, nice outfit you have. Is your certificate with you? The next one is... It looks like it's either a Vijay or a VT. Vijay? Okay. The last one I have is Allison. Is Allison here?
Okay.
We'll get him to the school.
All right, so these are the 6th graders. First, we have Yanelli. Is Tamra in the house? Is she right tomorrow?
Is he doing homework?
I was gonna say, the 7th graders are home doing their homework.
Hey, okay.
Congratulations, well done. And I do want to note that we were doing this with Amanda just last year, when she won among the seventh graders and also went on to the county competition. You did very well.
I want to thank all of you, all the people who made the STEM Fair happen, and all the kids and all the parents who put an immense amount of work in it, and really congratulate every child who participated, as well as all of our winners, some of whom had some pretty impressive projects. I hope to see you going far. Anybody else wish to say anything?
I think I said part of it already before.
That's all right, then.
But anyway, I just think it's a great project that we continue having in our district, and I hope it never goes away. And it brings good ideas from the children, and it's just great to see it all there. I wish...we could bring it all back here, but it's just too much.
Yeah, it's great. Okay, one more round of applause for all our science fair winners. And although I always encourage people to stick around and see what we do business-wise, I also know the kids tend to need to go home, finish the homework, get to bed and so forth, so don't feel shy if you do need to leave. And I see our relay people are going to make it hard for you to get out without helping. This does bring us to our communications section. All right, thank you. I guess they want us in the background. Here we are.
Smile.
Well, guys, you're on camera. Okay, thank you. Now, let's go ahead and move on to the next section of our agenda, the communications. Do we have any administrator comments? You can save it for later, okay? Ms. Hopkins?
Just to congratulate all the participants and winners at the STEM Fair, and really thank their families and the staff that helped make the event so great.
Should've made them stay until after this.
Yes.
Did you have anything you wish to say?
I would just like to thank the people who organize all the cancer fundraisers and the events, because I don't think there's a family around that's not untouched by cancer.
Can't imagine. Board member, acknowledgements and commendations?
To acknowledge how many principals and teachers we have in here this evening. It's nice to see everyone. And also, once again, to acknowledge and commend Rosie Tahada for being the new board member in the high school district.
I was gonna have that under my comments, but she left already, too. It is a pleasure having someone as qualified as Rosie to be on the high school board, because she has done so much for the elementary schools, and also now that she has students in the high school. So she's gonna be a dynamite person. I'm glad she's there. But what I wanted to ask is that this evening, it seems like I'm always saying something like this, but we could close the meeting this evening in memory of Marie Zuparis, and my cousin, who is eight years younger than I, just passed away. And she is a product of Westmore High School in our community. She presently lives with her...lived with her husband, also in Daly City, so I was gonna miss her a lot, so. Anyway, and then I wanted to say that I attended the workshop on Saturday. That was absolutely fantastic for the Common Core. And we thought, we were hoping that they were gonna get 100 to 200 people, and those 350 adults that signed in, I think it was 160 children. It was amazing. All the people that were there, we had teachers volunteering, and we had the food that was given to us, donated to us to feed everyone. And just to see everybody working together for the same reason. And parents were delighted, because I think there were translators there, and thank you, Bernie, our superintendent, who did some translating, too. And we had our administrators there, it was great, and board members were there, and just everybody came together for the same thing. Help our students and help the families that need the help to understand what we're all gonna be going through. And we can only be successful. And then also to put a little note to those that aren't aware, our teachers are well ahead of the game. They have been training for the last two years, where some districts are just starting. And you know, anytime you have enough time to prepare yourself, you can be only successful. So I'm really proud of everybody that was there. And we even had students volunteering to work also to help out. We had childcare. We had everything, prizes that were donated, that were given to people. And just was something that was so awesome that I hope, I was telling Melinda, I hope they put a lot of this stuff together and make it a report or a plan or a presentation to show other districts or to show everybody what can be done. We didn't expect it to be...I mean, we thought it would be good, but we didn't expect it to be outstanding. And I will make a mention that our president of the board was there reading to the children in childcare, which was great, meaning that she's an author herself. So that was really a good thing. So I wanted to make that comment. And I already mentioned about what Broadmoor is, I won't say that again. And so, I know there was something else, but I'll think of it later, maybe at the end of the meeting. But anyway, just want to say thank you to everyone that's trying to make our district the best we can. And I think the end of the day was really something for me to see, when the principal at Woodrow Wilson...is he here tonight? No? Okay.
Still recovering.
Probably recovering. We stayed to the bitter end, trying to clean up, and then I see him sweeping the floor. And I said, now there's a principal with a heart, you know? He's sweeping the floor. So everybody got in and pitched in and did everything possible, and you guys were there, too. But thank you for just all coming together.
Well, I was also mostly going to commend the district and particularly congratulate the teachers' union, the PTA, that worked together to put together that workshop on Saturday on the Common Core, and the national...I believe it was the National Federation of Teachers that helped provide money to bring in experts from all over the country to talk about that. It was incredible to see, and it was really heartwarming to see so many parents, teachers, and everybody out to get what they provided. And so, just a huge congratulations to the PTA and the teachers' union for an incredibly successful event. I have no speakers cards from anyone wishing to address the board. Where's Melinda?
She's probably recuperating.
She's recovering as well. So if we have any correspondence or comments from our superintendent?
Yes. So yeah, I too want to acknowledge just the busyness of the last two weeks. Most of you have mentioned the reclaiming the promise event. I wanted to say a special thank you to Melinda Dart, who's not here today in person, but I'm sure she's here in spirit. She can't miss a board meeting, and so we are grateful for her and her efforts for arranging for the team to come. It seemed like it was a great opportunity. Also, two weeks ago at Woodrow Wilson, also on a Saturday, we held a tax preparation event for families who needed support and help to file taxes, many of whom were able to file free online. And I believe they served just over 90 individuals who were filing taxes that Saturday. They were hoping to reach 60, and they reached 90. That was a great event as well. So thanks to Mr. Allen for being present on both of those events, and also his PTA president, Ms. Amy Marr, who was there as well on both of those days, and to the staff of the school for allowing their classrooms to be used. We do have another community event happening this Saturday for families interested and wanting to sign up for healthcare coverage. This event will take place at the Broadmoor Presbyterian Church on 87th Street, just around the corner from here, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. There are flyers that have been sent home, and as well as email flyers that went home to all of our families with an email address. So this is an opportunity to sign up, find out what kind of subsidies one might qualify for, and more importantly, make sure that everyone in the family has coverage. Those people who are covered tend to live longer, and so we want everyone to be around as long as possible.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vidalas. And that brings us to general functions, item one, the consent agenda. Could I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we had a unanimous approval of the consent agenda. And item two, Thomas R. Polisita Middle School Project Update. And I believe we have Mark Nubie, Louis and McKinley to tell us what's happening.
Thank you. I'm Wally Gordon with the LM Architects. For those of you that might not recognize me, I've been around almost 20 years since we did Susan B. Anthony and some of the other facilities. I know you do, Mary. It's always great to be here. It's a privilege. It's always wonderful to once be a STEM student and now kind of practice and do what I once aspired when I was the age that they're now aspiring. So thank you very much for letting me grow up and do grown-up things, and this is a lot of fun, because I feel like I'm a little kid with just an older look. So again, I appreciate it. We're here to kind of show you we're getting really excited, because this is all evolving. I'm gonna go through, for those of you who weren't here when I did the first presentation, to talk about how we've master-planned, how we've kind of went through the site, and we've spent a lot of time with the staff, Superintendent Vidalas and his staff, as well as Brent and his staff at the site, and kind of methodically gone through how we're gonna put this together. This is TR Polisita, obviously. It's inclusive of the Susan B. Anthony site at the bottom of the screen, the gymnasium that we did for Polisita well several years ago, and the existing site that's down the hill to the left there. It was built in '52, '62, and other phases and things that were done, just so you understand it's truly a post-World War II school. It's approximately, without the gymnasium, it's approximately 60,000 square feet, which is about right for the 650 students that it houses. It's got 32 classroom count. We've kept that very flat. We're keeping that as the count. We're not trying to expand the school in any way. We have parking of about 18 stalls, and we're actually taking that up to 32. We've actually increased the onsite parking quite a bit. The goals that we're trying to achieve were essentially to refurbish the teaching environment and basically give it a whole new feel in that sense, as far as refurbishing it, creating a new inviting front door. Right now, it's, you know, I think it's not just architects. It's easy to get lost if you're a first-time visitor, and you really want a sense of entrance when you come to a school or any civic building. The other one is just to create an efficient parking and passenger loading area. We actually met with the city. They were kind enough to come out with a city engineer, your facilities director, Rick Young, and myself, and I should also mention Scott Bergy from our office has been spending incredible amounts of time helping make sure this happens correctly. And of course, one of the major issues is ADA access compliance. And I'll just show this slide. This essentially shows you that we actually have, without even considering the upper level of the gym, we have 15 feet of rise across the site, and that's a lot to deal with in today's environment of making an accessible site for the disabled. And one of the reasons why we had to kind of take a hard look at replacing a lot of buildings, it was just too expensive, and you would've had a whole labyrinth of elevator lifts everywhere around this campus to make it work. Real quick, since we had to take out quite a few buildings to make this look, it gave us the chance to really kind of reconfigure this campus and make it feel and look the way it really should in today's way of designing schools. So there's basically three components that we focus on when we design a school. One is the public access area. Sometimes in the old days, they would actually design the principal's office in the center of the campus, and that's a no-no. Now, we really want that to be the gateway at the front of the campus, so we really wanted to make sure we did that correctly. The hardtop play area, which connects up with the gymnasium, and then the classroom area, which I call the private area. So we have that kind of cluster. We have a public area, a private area, and a play area. So again, maintaining the classroom count, improving the functional relationships. This is the basic layout that we have. There's a couple of things that happened along the road. You know, the last time was before the board, we're using the drawings that were originally done in the 1960s. And what we didn't know is actually there was a street widening that occurred between the drawings we had and now. So we had to reconfigure since the last one, and the main thing is, has to do with the...they call it Wing 60 right here. Essentially, we had lost space at the front of the campus, so we had to take a look. Wing 60 had to go. We were originally planning on keeping it. I'll kind of keep mentioning that back. But it wasn't, it was, I think, about $800,000 of additional cost to take that out, replace it with all new classrooms in the backside. So we basically pulled some of the old classrooms back into new classrooms at the rear of the campus. That was a major configuration. Otherwise, the concept that we showed the board four months ago is still intact. We're still approaching it that way. I just lost my forward motion. Oh, there we go. So that's a campus in 3D. I'm gonna take you into 3D now. Where I'm gonna take you through is a procession of how we kind of planned, laid out, what the functional elements of the school are, and then I'm gonna show you how we kind of layered the architecture on top, and I'm not gonna keep it too much of a mystery. We really wanted to blend in with Susan B. Anthony and Polisita Gymnasium that were done predecessors. So we're really trying to make this feel like a cohesive campus, both in function. This was a view of the campus. The yellow elements in 3D are showing you the wings that are taken out. The one that's missing, again, I'm gonna keep highlighting, is Wing 60, which now is turning yellow on us, but I just wanted to show you how we presented it to you last time. So that one's out now. And we've actually ghosted in, you can see in the orange element, the multipurpose room. So you can kind of see where we took things out, as well as put things in in the same view. The blue actually represents the new classrooms at the back. The purple represents some new toilet room facilities that we're putting in conceptually. Another look, another way of kind of doing it. Again, the same concept. The yellow is what we're taking out, ghosted in with the orange that we're putting in. And the blue at the back were the new classrooms. You can see Susan B. Anthony in the distance with the Polisita Gymnasium at the top of the hill there. Colma is in the green in the foreground. We're not doing anything to that campus. Again, just another view, the front of the campus.
Are you doing anything to that hill that's in between?
No, the hill to the...between the gymnasium and down the slope, no. We are in the backside to contour and get some more classrooms in because of what I just mentioned, having to deal with the street widening that we didn't see with the first survey work that we looked at, but the updated survey. We pushed the classrooms back a little. We're gonna recontour, but it's nothing significant. Once we're finished, people probably won't even know what we did. Another thing I want to go through real quick that was really important was the sequencing of how we want to do this, because one of the things that's a challenge for designing in the school environment is making sure we have a safe site during construction. There's a couple of very important things. One is we didn't want to have to spend money on interim housing. We wanted to basically build new, keep it, not have to build anything that was temporary, if we could avoid it, and that's what we've been able to achieve. So the sequencing I'm gonna go through is showing you how we're gonna get to that point and do it kind of safely as we get through the campus sequencing of construction. Again, that's the site. The first thing we're gonna do is build classrooms, and I think we just kicked that cloud The first thing we're gonna do is build classrooms, and I think we just kicked that classroom count up to 19, was it, Scott? We're now up to 19, because again, we had to replace the 60 wing that we lost because of the street dimensions that we didn't have at the beginning of all of this. So the first thing we're doing is we're building the classrooms that allow us to take out the old wings. So we're doing that, and we're gonna have them up and ready and going. So that becomes the permanent housing, becomes our interim housing. The next thing we're gonna do, and again, we're gonna expand it to include the 60 wing, is take out the wings that we can, and now that we have this in place, we'll be able to take that out and run with it in terms of the new construction at the front. And then we'll start, again, with the new construction at the front, and then we'll have the second one. We're probably, we're looking at things, as we always trying to refine things, we'll probably refine what we had as the second and third phase together. We think we can pull those two elements together. And again, it'll be phases within phases, but essentially kind of refine it so things get done faster and hopefully more economically during construction. And I'm gonna talk about the 60 wing real quick, and it's that area right there. Essentially, we had to take that, and now that's gone. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew which area I was talking about. So that's essentially what the plan's looking like now. You can see where I took the 60 wing out. Again, that's circled in red. And essentially, that's now looking like that, because now that's gonna become our admin and library, and the multipurpose room here. With the existing, you can see the purple are the existing facilities that are to remain. The blue are the new classroom wings that we've built in the first phase. So now we have a complete campus in this configuration that replaces essentially what you have now. So I'm gonna kind of step through real quick and give you the three-dimensional, we call it eye candy. And again, oh, excuse me now, I jumped ahead of myself. I'm just gonna tell you functionally what we got. This is the administration building, and if you can kind of remember the basic layout, this is the admin right here, it's all in the same orientation. So we want the public to come in and be met right away with the reception area. So boom, you're in off of the parking drop-off, you're right here. Again, the public side functions are the multipurpose room and the admin, to a certain extent, the library. But in this case, we decided to pull the library back into the campus, so it's really not so much public. It's partially public right there at the gateway, but it's a little more central to the classrooms, because it truly is a teaching facility. So this is the admin. Again, by function, the things we've taken out elsewhere, we're putting them right back in. The main office, which is right there at the gateway to the campus, has a conference room, principal's office, counselor's office, other things, attendance, again, students come right in here. And then the staff restroom, and then we have a couple of staff workroom and staff breakroom in general here, a couple of restrooms just off to the right of that, which also conserve the multipurpose room as overflow, because the multipurpose room is just to the right of this, if you remember in plan configuration. The nurse.